I call to order the Adrian City Commission's special meeting for June 3, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Bankey.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bankey.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on, we have a proclamation as it is Pride Month and the proclamation will be read tonight and then it will be displayed in outside the mayor's office in City Hall on the first floor along with the pride flag and then after our next meeting, there will be another proclamation joining that as well outside of my office in City Hall. Whereas the city of Adrian supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination and whereas all people regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the city of Adrian accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning intersex or asexual communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city of Adrian. And whereas we as a society must acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. Now therefore, I Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the city of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 2024 is Pride Month in Adrian, Michigan, recognizing all LGBTQIA+ citizens whose influential and lasting contributions to our community make Adrian a vibrant place in which to live, work, and visit. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Bankey.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance 24-001 is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 3.1 of Article 3 of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance and the zoning map to which reference is therein made to the extent of rezoning 440 East Church Street from RO Residential Office District to ERO Education, Research, and Office District. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Support. Are there any public comments in regards to this ordinance? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bankey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Ordinance passed by unanimous vote.
Moving on to ordinance 24-002. Second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations by amending that chapter to add a new Article 6 Point of Sale inspections. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
We will have public comment on this at this time, but before we begin, I just want to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, which you will see on the screen and we will start inside the chambers first. And for the record, you must state your name and your place of residence, your municipality, sorry about that. And also I want to just make sure that you are aware of our rules that you will make responsible comments relating to matters before the commission. City business or policy or issues of community concern or interest, such persons shall refrain from making defamatory or profane remarks or remarks constituting a personal attack upon a commissioner or city official or employee which is totally unrelated to the manner in which the commissioner, official, or employee performs his or her public duties. While commenting upon the actions, inactions, or performance of the commission or any of the city's commissions, boards, employees, or consultants, profane, vulgar, or abusive language will not be tolerated. We will begin inside the chambers when we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Hi, Jeff Rising, City of Adrian. We're all here again. I know that some of you have your minds made up already in what you're going to vote. I've been there. I've been where you're sitting before, so I know how this works. Some comments were made from commissioners last time, some emails we got that plenty of people are in favor of this ordinance. Well, none of them showed up last time, right? Not a single person came up here and spoke in favor of this ordinance at the first reading. So I don't want you to confuse people being in favor of blight removal with being in favor of this ordinance. Those are two completely separate things. I'm in favor of blight removal, but I'm not in favor of this ordinance because these things don't work together. I think we determined last time, we can make a good guesstimate that this ordinance will only fix maybe 10 to 15 houses a year. This does not fix the blight problem in Adrian. So again, please don't confuse people being in favor of blight removal with being in favor of this ordinance because I don't think those two are the same thing. Thank you.
Harry Smith, City of Adrian. Point of sale ordinances only apply when a property is sold, meaning that properties not on the market might avoid necessary repairs or upgrades indefinitely. This creates an inequitable situation where only those participating in the real estate market are held to these standards, potentially leading to a disparity in property conditions and safety across a community. If you're looking to reduce crime through the reduction of blight, then waiting for people to sell their blighted homes seems incredibly detrimental to the urgency of that mission. I believe that yes, crime, blight, and the unhoused population are all matters of concern that demand action from our local government and collectively our community, but infringing on the rights of private property owners and implementing an ordinance that will harm our most vulnerable, such as the elderly, disabled, low-income residents, and minorities, all while creating more hurdles in the housing market is not the way to do it. And risk of violating what was said, I find it interesting that 23 people spoke out at the last meeting opposing this ordinance. However, our city administrator in an interview after that meeting was quoted saying, "I don't have a vote, so I don't have an opinion." I'd like to think that anyone proposing this ordinance that's potentially harmful to the citizens of the city would strongly be in favor of it, that they would think it would work and that's why they're willing to take that risk. Surely you'd have to have an opinion because the flip side of that coin is indifference, which makes sense because an article published in August 2020 stated, and I quote, "Elliott said he would first relocate to the city. He's lived in Washtenaw County for years, but said residing in Adrian is more important in the chief executive role." Elliot said Adrian has.
I'm sorry, you're out of line. You need to stop. Thank you.
City residents should be making this decision, city council members, not residents of other cities. I urge you as city commissioners who are voted and by members of this community to listen to what the members of your community, actual city of residents, are telling you. Mr. Gauss sent an email that said many of his 20,000 constituents were in favor of this ordinance. Has there been any polling done to see what city residents truly are in favor of? Because like Jeff said, I bet they will say they are in favor of eradicating blight, but by what means? I don't think this is it and I think you should poll your residents. To ignore the collective vocal opposition of this ordinance is to do a great disservice to your constituents, especially your most vulnerable ones who at many times do not have a voice in discussions like these. I urge you to be their voice and vote no on point of sale ordinances.
Hi, Patricia Clark, City of Adrian. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am in favor of blight removal. I think that we take great pride in our homes where and where we can. I have great pause about this method of doing so. One of the things that concerns me probably the most is that some of our residents that have the least means to repair to the degree would then have to sell their homes at a lesser cost for the buyer than to make those repairs, which I do agree with. That's sort of a yin yang type of thing. The problem I do have with that is for some people, this is their biggest asset and to take away their power to have something when they go to sell their home, when a buyer has the ability to come forward and say, "This is the home that I'm purchasing for this amount of money and I'm willing to do repairs." I personally live next to a house that's been abandoned, or not abandoned, but not lived in for about 10 years. This personally would probably benefit me if that home were sold to have a new roof and new windows and things like that. But there are such a discrepancy between those who can and those who cannot that I wish there was another method for going about having the means of blight removal. So I appreciate what the other speakers have said and I ask you to spend some more time considering this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary. I live on Center Street in Adrian. My personal belief on this ordinance will mostly affect the people on my side of town, the low-income east side residents of the city of Adrian. I don't think any of you live on the east side. I don't believe any of you live on the east side and I feel that this will be most detrimental to the folks in my neighborhood. And if this ordinance passes, I will mobilize and I will knock on every door on the east side of Adrian and I will mobilize those people to come in here and vote you all out. Thank you.
Hi, Bill Swift, Chair of the Lenawee County Democratic Party, a resident of the city of Tecumseh. One thing I just wanted to note, I listened to what your guidelines were and I just want to make sure everybody's got their active listening ears on that when criticism is coming your way, that it's not necessarily a personal attack. It might be just a criticism of your conduct. Furthermore, I also said, you know, listening to the thing, it talked about defamation. I believe it is a true fact to say that the city administrator is not a resident of the city of Adrian and I don't think that that's inappropriate for anybody to point out that that's not going to affect him, that this rule would not affect him, but that's not really the important thing here. I think it's important and for people to realize that your job is to balance the rights against other people's rights, right? So people don't like living around blighted properties. There's a medley of existing ordinances that are at your disposal. My understanding from listening to people who have come to me and said, "Hey, maybe we should talk about this," is that the city hasn't been really interested in doing the work, doing the work of that, of that inspection and looking and sending in the notices and making sure that things get taken care of in a timely fashion, just like they're supposed to, because that's what the rules are. What this does is this is yet another step of taking rights, privileges, whatever you want to talk about in terms of one's property, the owning of a home, the owning of that home that you've, has been pointed out, is probably the biggest asset that anybody's going to have. Maybe they spent their entire life saving and scrimping so that they could have it and to be told, "Well, here is yet another opportunity for the city to step in and prevent me from exercising my property rights," which is what this is. And when, and this is something as somebody who had lived and grown up in the country, things are different in the city. I understand that now, after having moved here to a city, that you are giving up some essential rights and liberties because you have to balance that against what your neighbors' rights and liberties are. So I understand this conceptually. But, you know, it's the biggest single asset that you're going to ever own. It seems to disincentivize the actual natural blight remediation that would occur from the sale of that home and some new buyer purchasing it. And yet you have all these other tools at your disposal that you're not seem to be, you know, interested in exercising and using. Seems ill-considered to say that there are people that are, you know, supporting it. Boy, they're not here. They don't seem to be speaking about it. That should tell you something. Thank you so much.
Casey White, Madison Township resident. I am a homeowner and a taxpayer in the city of Adrian, but more importantly, I'm here as a representative to many homebuyers and sellers in the city of Adrian. So while the point of sale will not have an adverse effect on many residents here, it will have an adverse effect on the lower-income and first-time homebuyers. The loans that these buyers are using do not allow for the repair escrows should a seller not complete required repairs and choose to escrow or pass that cost on to the buyer. Creating more and more difficult hurdles for these homebuyers is irresponsible on your part and in my opinion should be considered housing discrimination. The other cities you mentioned, where this is working, have you compared the poverty level in Adrian to them? Do you have a plan to create more jobs and increase income here? As leaders of our community, you should be doing everything in your power to encourage home buying in the city and the area that will most be affected by this ordinance, the east side. Please consider all of our residents when you place your vote tonight. Thank you.
Ken Tolcars, Adrian, Michigan. Adrian High School, we all know Adrian High School. I have worked in construction 25-plus years and all of these inspections are subjective. Adrian High School, we were doing the renovations over there. The fire marshal and the building inspector state arguing back and forth on where the pole station went in the building. So these inspections are subjective. I did a job in Georgia. We took out a water heater that was up above the ceiling. Inspector said I couldn't put one in the ceiling. There was one there that was on our drawings. He still wouldn't let us put it up in the ceiling. So the problem is that a lot of these inspections can be subjective and you don't know what someone's going to look at. My brother bought a townhouse, five years old in Dearborn. They had a point-of-sale inspection. Five years old and they came up with tuck pointing. So I just don't think, I think it's subjective and we really don't know what's going to be out there. I mean, my roof may have four years left on it. Your inspector may say, "No, it needs to be replaced." What is my recourse then if I'm trying to sell my house? The other part I want to bring up is your inspections and you all know that I FOIA'd on your inspectors. You have one inspector who does have some credentials. You have another inspector, he worked at a hardware store and you had him out doing rental inspections. I think now because I sent that in, you now have that person taking some classes. So it means that you guys don't have your house together. So what right does that give you to look at my house and say what's going to be done at my house? My house, my house had a lot of work that had to be done to it. If this thing, the owner wouldn't have, the owner wouldn't have sold it and he wouldn't have done it and I wouldn't have paid all this extra money to do it. So I think that this is wrong for the city of Adrian. We are not Wyandotte. We are not Southgate. They have populations, I think of 100,000 in that, I think, no 1.2 million people in Wayne County and here you only have like 100,000 in the county. You don't have the density of population to have this type of a point-of-sale ordinance. You've got the tools, you just don't use them. I know there's a property on Madden Mayor, north of town, the party store. You know what light pollution is? And I went there and I went in your office, we sat there, we talked about light pollution. Those lights are still shining. When you drive north on 52, they're shining in your eyes in the morning. There's a house on Locust Street north of me. I've called on that on several times and I find out that Nathan Byrd waived the painting requirement and the guy's a painter for a living. Lastly, Mr. Miller, you know, I talked to you about a house. It's been a year since that house. Anything's been done. No screens, no rails, siding that's missing from the house and I brought it to your attention. Nobody does anything. So only person who
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Chief Emmerich listens. When I call him, he does something.
Bradley N. Watson, City of Adrian, resident at 144 North Scott Street, former city commissioner from 2017 to 2021. I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of the point-of-sale inspection ordinance. During my tenure on the City of Adrian City Commission, the ordinance to allow marijuana was brought before us. Similar to this ordinance, these chambers were packed to standing room only capacity. Most of the people here were in favor of the ordinance. Resident after resident, non-resident after non-resident stepped up to this microphone explaining their position. Very few people, resident or non-resident, felt the need or desire to speak in opposition. Regardless, I was elected by the residents to govern and make decisions in what I thought was in the best interest of the city of Adrian and all the residents, not just the ones that made it into the chambers. I voted no because that is what I thought was best for all residents and the future of the city of Adrian. Tonight, you are in a similar position to what I was. You have been elected to make this decision on behalf of all residents, current and future. This ordinance has the potential to make our city better for all the residents. A personal example, in my neighborhood is a home that most people do not realize has been vacant for years. The resident was moved into assisted living and their heirs have done the bare minimum of cutting the grass and occasionally trimming the landscape. I heard there is a new young family that is very interested in purchasing the house as a fixer-upper. This is fantastic news, not only for my neighborhood, but also for our city. One of our biggest issues with this, one of the biggest issues with this home is the garage. It is my amateur opinion that this garage should be demolished as it appears to be a hazard. A point-of-sale inspection might also find this to be a violation of minimum standards and require the sellers to take action, which would result in transferring a true asset to the young new owners instead of strapping them with a dangerous liability. Negotiating a discounted price for a crumbling garage is not necessarily going to fix that garage in a timely fashion or maybe even ever. I realize this ordinance will not have sweeping immediate impact, but there is a chance that it will have a positive impact and with all ordinances, they can always be revoked or changed. The right thing to do is vote yes and give all the residents in the city the chance of positive change for improved home inventory. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jim Kapnik. I'm a resident of the city of Adrian. My family has lived and worked in Adrian for over 100 years and I am deeply committed to its long-term success. Blight's a significant issue throughout our community and we must use every tool possible to eliminate it. And listening to the comments that are made, it's clear that everyone is in alignment on eliminating blight in Adrian. It's a key incentive of the city and has the backing of nearly every resident. If we're so supportive of eliminating blight, then why not use every tool possible? Currently, Adrian relies on the enforcement officer tool and while effective, it often depends on fines, penalties, and legal actions, which can be less than efficient. The point-of-sale ordinance would provide the city with an additional tool that virtually guarantees the exterior of a blighted property would be brought up to minimum standards when the property is sold. This approach works and accelerates the elimination of blight in the community as evidenced by successes in number of our surrounding communities. I've spoken to numerous citizens and I want to address some of the common concerns that they have. One of their concerns, they say, is the inspection is an added burden that will slow down the real estate transaction. I want to be clear, this inspection is for exterior only. It'll be quick and inexpensive. Other communities have chosen an exterior and interior inspection and this is not the case for Adrian. It's exterior only. The second concern I've heard is that people cannot afford to make the necessary repairs when selling their home. In fact, sellers have the option of making the necessary repairs or taking a lower sales price and putting money in escrow for the buyers to make the required repairs. Imagine a first-time buyer that's used all of their resources to purchase a fixer-upper home. They now have money in escrow to improve the exterior of the property, creating intense pride of ownership while significantly solving our blight issue. When blight is addressed, neighbors become revitalized, property values rise, and community pride increases. Residents feel safer and improved aesthetics attract new businesses and families. Please do the right thing to cure our community's blight by voting yes in support of the point-of-sale ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Schmidt. I'm at 428 Elm Street in Adrian. I've lived here, this is my 16th year. And my house is paid for. I have no mortgage. I have no bank to lean on at the moment for for the quality or contents of my home, but it is insured. And what happens with money is not what happens with the quality of the home. You are aware that we now have a new hospital in Tecumseh by closing the two that serviced Adrian. And you are aware that perhaps you're not aware that St. Joseph's Church was approached a couple of years ago to take out all their stained glass windows because they didn't like the lead in the windows. And so we were able to get around that. I pay consumers for all my electricity. It comes from the state and it comes from Tecumseh. It does not come from Adrian. Adrian provides citizens gas. And the gas then is compensated by a rebate to the gas company to keep me warm across the winter. No, I'm sorry, all electric and, you know, going up into space for our energy is not going to work. It's an expensive deal and everybody that I have talked to agrees that it's out of line. It's exploration, critical exploration, but not the way to go at the present moment. If money is something that you want, don't ask somebody who's retired. I invest in my home and upgrade the quality of my home, but there will come a time when I won't be able to do that either. Thank you.
Angie Werner, primary residence is Raisin Township. I own a business and houses, property in the city of Adrian. I am here to be against this point-of-sale ordinance because the main impact will be on the people that can't afford to do anything. I spoke with several of my customers up in Washtenaw County that do point-of-sale residences or point-of-sale inspections and they said it's very sad because a lot of people that can afford it and have no problems, pay the fine and they go on. The people that are hurt the most are the people that are trying to sell their house because they can't afford to keep it, because they can't afford to fix it up. And then they can't sell it and it remains blighted and nothing gets done about it. And that's what's going to happen here. The people that are going to suffer from this ordinance are the people that can't afford to fix it up in the first place. The City of Adrian should help them fix it up instead of impose this fee on everybody to do this point of sale. VA and FHA inspections are very rigorous. You cannot have peeling paint, you cannot have uh, railings that are not up to code. All of those have to be done before the house can be sold on those inspections. So basically, the only people that are going to be infected are low-income people, people that are getting conventional loans and have money and aren't worried about it. If you want to get rid of blight, there has to be a better way of doing it with what's here. I'm one that bought a house and had to fix it up and I would not have had the money to do all of that at first. It takes some time. I just think there's better ways to do it and I ask for you to vote no on this or reconsider if you are going to vote yes. It is not fair to everyone in the city.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Norton. I'm a resident of the City of Adrian. Uh, I moved here about nine years ago and about three years ago, I inherited a house from my mother when she passed away due to COVID. My house has recently, recently been blighted because my mom let my house go into disrepair. Uh, if this point of sale was to have been through when my mother had passed, my sisters and I would have been out of luck because the two of them lived out of state. And to be able to take care of all of this uh, dealings would have forced them to come out here multiple times. And I know that's a different situation than most people in the city are in. But I want to point out that there are a lot of families in here that have houses that have been passed down through generations where people are trying to fix them up and putting this into play kind of messes with that. I'd like to point out that there's also not a lot of resources for people like me who are under financial constraints to be able to get our houses repaired on the exterior. Painting a two-story house in the City of Adrian can cost anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand dollars. So I want people to be aware of that, that it is not a cheap endeavor to fix your house from blight and it can take a few years. Sometimes selling the house is the best option, as other people have already stated that this could help with improvements for people that are coming in with the money actually allocated to be able to do that. I think the city council needs to take that into advisement. And honestly, after hearing everyone else here, it might be better to put this to a popular vote for the count, not sorry, for the city members themselves, the residents, instead of putting it on to the city council. Thank you for your time.
Keith Mueller, Adrian resident. About this blight issue and stuff. I guess I said the last meeting, I have a rental across the street from me that's been condemned for two years. Nobody's tore it down. Nobody does anything about it. There's rabbits running out from underneath it right now. There's raccoons running out from underneath it. There's possums, everything else. Nobody wants to do nothing about that, but we're worried about point of sale. Worried about blight from other, everybody else. As far as inspections, you guys want $200 for a half an hour. I already pay you guys. Why should I have to pay you again to come out and look at something? Shouldn't have to pay anybody. You're already being paid once. Why should I pay an employee again? Shouldn't have to. As far as inspections, I had Gary Bice come out one time and do an inspection on a roof. Got out of his truck. Oh, that looks good. Have a good day. Turned around and walked away. That was the inspection. Why should I pay for an inspection? Shouldn't. That's how the city operates. That's how the inspectors operate. I've done, I've dealt with this for years. My brother was a contractor. He was a carpenter. I've done all my home That's how all these apartment houses are passing these loan inspections. A lot of them ain't worth a damn around here. A lot of them wouldn't pass inspections if you had a good inspector. But they all pass, don't they? Go look at them. Half of them down on Erie Street wouldn't pass inspections, but they pass. Just check them out. Check them out. Do that. There I go. Oh, there comes another guy. Oh, there comes another girl.
My name is Russell Richards and I am a resident of the City of Adrian. First of all, I don't think I'm going to change out of your mind. Um, I urge you to vote no. Um, I think this would be bad for the community, bad for Adrian. But I also want to thank you that have responded to my emails. I do, I really do appreciate that. Um, it's been a good, good thing. And I'm going to refer back to my email a little bit. Um, have we did a really audit on blight in the City of Adrian? Um, if so, what are, are the results? Are we, is it more rental? Is it more just homeowners? I don't think really no, because uh, I'll refer to the Lenawee Voice. During a pre-meeting study session, Commissioner Bob Benke and Servo had asked Servo questions. He asked for an estimate on how many homes would not pass an inspection of bond sale. Commissioner, Commissioner Mary Roberts said that based what she had heard from real estate agents, the number is about 50%. Well, we can't base that on what we heard. We need to look because I have a really strange feeling in my ventures around the City of Adrian. The rental properties are the blight. And now we've kind of identified now a point of sale ordinance, so you're basically saying that if I sell my house, I'm going to be kind of almost like identified as blight. The City of Adrian has many, many ordinances. Um, they're not being enforced. I think we could eliminate a lot of this if, if we went and enforced them and uh, maybe retracted that and come back and maybe looked at this later, but I'm really, I'm really, really against it because I don't think the city is enforcing it right now. The city has many problems. They have crime. We have drug issues. We have street cleanliness. I see the streets are getting paved. That's wonderful. That's, that's a positive thing to look at our city. But I could go over on Maple Avenue near Alexander and the drain that wasn't cleaned out and the water stood there for days. As a matter of fact, it was near Doug Spade's house. Now mud's there. Is that considered blight? What is the definition of blight? Um, I really think we've opened up a can of worms here because like I said, uh, I kind of perceive it as, you know, government, government overreach on the taxpayers of Adrian when we could enforce the laws that are already in place. I don't think we're doing that and I think we need to do a better job than that instead of doing this point of sale ordinance. And I still urge you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Claire Baxter, 137 East Front Street, Adrian. I'm here to say that anyone purchasing property here in Adrian to get a mortgage, to go to a bank, has to have the house inspected. They have to have an appraisal. When they do the appraisal, they do it interior and exterior. You probably know they've taken pictures of bedrooms, bathrooms to know what they are financing. Those who cannot get financing have to buy cash and who has that? Otherwise, they'd go for a land contract. In buying a property on a land contract, you want all you can possibly get. And then the purchaser probably doesn't have that kind of money to fix it up immediately. And then to who's going to inspect the property from the city? I have property being inspected nearby. They pulled a, what is it called? Uh, uh, inspection program code enforcement. Well, they did the inspection. They walked around the property. They didn't notice anything. I don't know what's going wrong with your inspectors, but how can you not notice holes in the ground, cement breaking on the house, missing windows? They didn't notice any of that, just like the gentleman said here. It's been sitting. It's been like that for four years. But the most wonderful thing is for the landlord is that he has five units and getting a lot of money per month. Does he spend any of that money on repairs? No. When does the city come and inspect? Okay, he has a, an estimate of what the repairs need to be done. Does he do it in a timely fashion? No, he doesn't do anything. One of the reasons being, according to the city, he has to pay a hundred dollars to have the house reinspected. And is he going to pay a hundred dollars to have someone come and say, hey, you should do this and you should that and you haven't done this? No, he's too smart for that. So the property is there in the same condition for approximately three years. No one's noticing or doing about the blight. Sometimes you can call City Hall, call the inspectors. What do they do and say? They're not in the office? Oh, they're busy on the road. Which road? I have no idea. Uh, so there you are. The only person going to buy your home is a land contract and he needs money to buy that home. Can he fix it up immediately? I doubt it. Can he make payments on that loan to fix it? Of course he can. Will the bank give him the money? No, but he'll probably have to get it from another family member to fix up that home. Think about what you're doing. I think you're hurting the, the east side people, anyone who's on a limited income. Think you reconsider your actions.
Hello, my name is David Quarter. I'm from Addison, but I'm a local real estate broker uh, as well as a property owner in the City of Adrian. Uh, thank you for taking this to task. And you know, I, I'm going to stand here to say, hey, thanks to Leslie, you know, Jack and Glenn, I think, Jake and Glenn, you know? They, they've been consistent throughout the inspection process. That's what we found and we go through a lot of inspections with them. Um, a couple of things real quickly. Usually a person that doesn't have a lot of cash, when they purchase a home, they're going to go FHA and VA. The house has to be in certain conditions for an FHA loan and it has to be, it has to be in, in a shape where it's going to be, you know, in repair for three years. If it has a bad roof, that, that house is not going to pass. Okay? So typically, first time home, not even a first-time home buyer, a sixty-year-old person who's coming through divorce, doesn't have a lot of cash, they're going to go FHA or VA if they're a veteran. So, you know, in regards to like, like there was a house on South Scott, that wasn't my dad's or anything. But I remember going through that process when my dad was sick, we were using all of our funds to keep him out of, to keep him in a place. So the house took, took second priority, you know? We kept him in the, in a home that was giving him good care instead of focusing the funds on, on the house. I recently sold homes in Romulus, Wyandotte and Southgate. Wyandotte, because my sister passed, Southgate is, is coming up. Since, since uh, we had ample time, I mean, we had ample time. She passed and then we had time to plan these inspections that, you know, so we could actually plan those inspections because we had to clean the house. And we had to organize the house, the same thing going on with Southgate. Now I want to clear up one thing. I know I'm running out of time. It was uh, by a former commissioner said Southgate was a historically blighted commission back in 2022 in the paper, right? It is not. I lived in Southgate from eighty-eight to ninety-two. It was a, it's a great area. It's a great area. Anyway, it will slow down the process and it'll affect some buyers. Not everyone plans ahead to sell their homes. Sudden death, a loss of employment, or even a Sunday unexpected viewing of a home. Sometimes people make up their minds. You know, if a couple wants to place an offer on a home and they have, they have to sell their property, the first question we're going to be asking is, have you been through the city inspection? If they haven't and another offer is in place, then uh, we're definitely, you know, obviously we have to take the other place, other offer. But anyway, thank you for listening. Have a good evening. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Mary Kleimer, I'm Adrian Township resident, but I'm also a Realtor. I just have one question, if anyone can answer it. Um, you're getting four hundred and seventy, I think I read, thousand dollars from a MISTHA grant. And I guess a lot of people that I talk to are curious why you can't focus on the blight right now with that money and focus on it right now instead of waiting possibly decades for a blighted home to go on the market. It's as simple as that. What can you do with your grant money that you couldn't do right now? Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Michelle Taylor. I live at uh, 712 North Locust Street. And I'm new to this community. I just bought a home. And I got to say, I, I really enjoy Adrian and I do appreciate this opportunity. And as a person, as a new homeowner, I think it's just, it's the American dream, isn't it? It's absolutely wonderful to have uh, my own yard, my own property, to have peace, to have security, to have good neighbors. And um, you know, uh, the question about blight, I look at this as somebody that just went through the process of looking at a lot of homes in Michigan that are in severe disrepair. There is a lot of mold, especially in standing homes and uh, the exterior as well. So um, I guess what I have to offer is uh, blight is significant. Uh, deterioration of a home can happen. They can erode very quickly as they lay vacant. Um, I ask that homes that are vacant, that it's moved forward, that they get occupants in it as soon as possible. And any barriers to that are alleviated to get good homeowners in there so that they can take care of it. So if a home is blighted today, it's a problem. If it's blighted tomorrow for somebody trying to sell it, it's a problem. And um, I look on here, the laundry list. You know, if there's some kind of resources that everybody can pitch in and fix bedroofs and broken windows, um, let's do it today, not before it's sold. Or better yet, if there are people that are already in the home, let's keep them in the home. Let's not have them leave. Let's have our good residents stay here and let's support them so that they can be in a good, beautiful home and uh, not have it be a blight status. I'd like to think that people, it's, you know, uh, not where you live, it's how you live. It's not how much money you have, it's how clean you are. You don't have a whole, have to have a whole lot of money to be able to pick up litter out of your, your, your lawn. So um, I guess like, uh, if we can step up, we should step up and we should do it. And um, I uh, just having in sight of being a new homeowner, I would like to see uh, a barrier not come onto the buyer. Um, I would like to see an opportunity if a buyer wants to take over a blighted home, every opportunity so that they could fix it up. So if it was something that it was an escrow, that they had a commitment to fix it up, I'd want to make sure that they did use that commitment to fix it up. Um, uh, if there's already an ordinance about blighted homes, I'd like to see today. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. The same rules do apply for the Zoom participants. You will see your three-minute time limit on the screen. Please state your name and your place of residence and also refrain from any um, defamatory remarks or um, profanity. Thank you.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm um, a resident of Adrian. I live on Mackenzie. I sent an email to some of the commissioners.
What is your name? What is your name, please?
Kim Nebel, N-E-B-E-L. And um, I just wanted to say that whenever I've been, I haven't had many dealings, excuse me. I haven't had many dealings with city employees, but lately when I have, it, they seem very stressed and very overworked. Like, you know, they're nice, but I can recognize the signs of stress because I've worked for the government and I know that um, it can get very stressful. So I wish that instead of creating a new job, that we would try to support some of the existing employees in the jobs that they have to do. I bought my home four years ago in Adrian and got an FHA mortgage. And it's true, they do a very thorough inspection inside and out. They had a few things that they wanted um, the sellers to fix before they'd approve it. And then after the sellers fixed them, then they came back and inspected and made sure that it was done. And it was one of the most stressful things you can go through, in my opinion, is buying a home. Cause there's so many different things that, you know, have to fall into place stuff. So I just, I just don't think this is a good use of city employees. I think that they're clearly busy and have other things to do. If we have money to hire people, I think, you know, we should hire more police officers. They seem very stressed and very overworked. It's very hard to talk to anybody if you call the city. Stop, excuse me. If you call the city offices, you know, maybe getting somebody to answer the phones. It's, you know, let's take care of the things that we've got going on rather than creating this job that really isn't necessary because it's already being done, you know, like everybody's been saying the home. So I urge you to vote no on this and thank you for your time.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Miller?
I don't speak very often. I just have to reassure everybody that I'm blessed to be living in Adrian for a while, probably not as long as some of you. I guess it's about fifty-four years, four different residences on the east side. And I have rental property in my house for the last thirty-five years. And I've gone through the renters inspections and they take hours to go through my two units in my house. That's just my experience. While I have the mic, I want to thank the real estate agents who sent messages to me. Uh, I read all of them until I found out that many of them were the same. Uh, but I did read a lot of them. I do want to thank you for that. And for clarification, one of the things that I really enjoyed was that you reassured me that even though you were saying that another inspection will just be another thing stacked on top, but you reassured me that the majority of the sales that happened in Adrian are already inspected. And we've been very clear from the very beginning that one of the things that we want to talk about through the process of this is that other inspectors can be doing this job. We don't have to have city employees doing these inspections. Many of you already have inspectors doing the job. We will accept that and work with them on that process. Thank you. The last thing. I, one kind gentleman continues to point to me about some project on Church Street that I do not own, never have owned, and insists that I better get it cleaned up or we're going to have problems. So I would, I wish that gentleman was still here so I could again, talk to him about, I've, I've, I've talked to him before. It's a very personal attack and I, I feel very, very uncomfortable about it every time he points to me and says, why don't I take care of my projects and my properties? I built my four residents from the ground up, I think. And I've worked very hard with my residents that I've had all on the east side for fifty-four years. And I'm not very interested in being pointed at anymore about that and very personal attack. I'm very sorry. I'm probably not appropriate to talk like that, but sorry. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I find this very important and I think, yeah, I do live on the west side now. I grew up on the east side. I know what it is to live on both sides of the town. So that when people say I live on the left side, west side now, it doesn't mean that I don't understand the east side. I feel differently. I was a principal at Drager Middle School on the east side of town. I taught and worked at Drager for twenty-six years. I understand those things. So one of the basic things that I wanted to know, I wanted to learn about this is we do have money. It was asked earlier, we have Michta money, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Have to remember that that's not a lot of money. But what you do have to remember is that we can reapply for that grant coming up and earn more money. And with that money, it's my hope as a commissioner, that if we pass this, we do it in a true pronged way. We help those people stay out of court that are deemed right now with houses that need repair. And plus we help those people that are going to transition into buying a home. So we do have assets to help that. And that's one of my major concerns. The other major concern is blight. And what I feel is when I've talked to, and I've gone and talked to realtors, I've visited cities, I put a lot of time into this because I want to be thoughtful in my decision. So when I talk to people, oftentimes they said, a point that's not made here is I live next to a home that's not repaired. And because of that, my house value goes down if I try to sell. So we have to make a balance. We have to help those that need it and we have to help those that are looking to buy one that can use it. And so that's what my hope is.
Having read, oh, thank you, sorry, I'm really bad at turning that on. Um, and listening to the public comments and having read a great deal of emails, sitting on the Blight Committee myself and researching what resilient communities look like, I learned that this community is very passionate and that democracy demands that we must agree to disagree from time to time. President Lincoln said it best when he shared with his good friend, if for this you and I must differ, differ we must. And it, that turned into a really good book you should read. Adrian has a brilliant history of ups and downs and in betweens. In the last twenty years, our city has seen some difficult times. During the last recession, we saw economic disinvestment, withdrawal of industry and a migration of our workforce, as well as a crashing housing market. The city laid off an immense number of employees and this community has still not regained our loss from all of the above. Our history creates dilemmas that we are still navigating. According to HUD, blight causes a decrease in surrounding property values, erodes the health of the local housing market, post-safety hazards for our citizens, increases crime, makes people feel unsafe and reduces local tax revenue. The number of rental properties in our community has increased exponentially, as has what many call blight. Many rentals have transferred hands multiple times. This causes, this causes an appraisal gap phenomenon resulting in market conditions that are more attractive to investors than owner occupiers. It also hampers market recovery and replicates circumstances that are more likely to result in empty or abandoned properties and that stay and remain in disrepair. Time changes everything and we must do what is necessary to continue to rebuild a resilient and thriving community. According to HUD and the Center for Community Progress, traditional code enforcement does not work. Blight costs hundreds of millions of dollars in reduced property values and millions of municipal safety regulated spending. Both agencies encourage the use of strategic code enforcement. Moving from traditional code enforcement to strategic code enforcement is not something done overnight or with one ordinance. It is a plethora of ways to equitably remove blight from our community. I've received those great many of, a great deal of email, phone calls or conversations in the community about point of sale. Many have shared that we just need to continue to enforce the code that we already have in place. In other words, traditional code enforcement. This will put undue burden on our citizens that may already struggle to age in place or have come upon financial hardship. Traditional code enforcement is punitive and includes fine fines, court appearances, court costs and time constraints. Using strategic code enforcement, we can, um, we can focus on proactive outreach such as rental inspections and certifications, education on code and housing maintenance, home repair programs such as a grant program with the Michta money we have. And we are working to create a loan program to help our citizens that may, that may have financial difficulties. Proactively using the county land bank and yes, maybe a point of sale ordinance. As a government entity, we have to be mindful, this is not a money grab, not a fourth amendment violation. The problems and costs that have not, the procedures and costs have not been solidified for this ordinance. This ordinance is meant to be a problem solving tool for the whole. In my research, approximately a hundred and ninety-eight homes were sold within a year that ended at the end of April of two thousand and twenty-four. In all of the one hundred and ninety-eight homes, forty-three were cash, ninety-three were conventional loans, fifty-six were Michta, VA or FHA loans. One was a land contract and one was listed as other. Thirteen were cash sales of extremely blighted properties under fifty thousand dollars. In traversing these homes, there is no action being taken place to remediate that blight by the owners and many are boarded up. Thirteen incredibly blighted properties costing the city taxpayers money in safety related spending. I recognize change is not easy and we will need to carefully navigate these waters. However, the safety and well-being of our community is of utmost importance. This ordinance calls for concessions by the city. It allows for community discussion and the creation of procedures that we will resolve for implementation within six months' time. I have worked in real estate and I spent most of the last twenty years working in social justice. I believe in each and every person that has shared their thoughts with me. I recognize those thoughts are valid. I also believe we can come to the table and create procedures that limit the burden on all, everyone and help us to continue to build a resilient community. Separated by disagreement, we will surely fail. With diverse knowledge, experience and a positive mindset, together we can succeed in making positive change. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? I appreciate it when these chambers are full of our citizens here to tell us their opinions and their concerns. I only wish that we had this many people turn out for all of our meetings to become more informed about our city government instead of just the times when we are discussing these controversial issues such as the ordinance we'll be voting on this evening. I respect those of you who are here tonight, much more than the keyboard warriors who make uninformed comments on social media, media nearly every day and sadly refer to our great city as the drain. Nearly, during the nearly five years I have served on this commission, I have tried my best to represent all of our citizens. And I know that is what every one of your commissioners and your mayors strive to do. Some of you have characterized this as an east side versus west side issue, an attack on the elderly and the poor in our community, a case of government overreach, government intrusion and a violation of your civil rights. You're entitled to your opinion, but so am I. I don't believe that any of those things are true. From my point of view, it is an attempt to beautify our city and improve our quality of life. I want Adrian to be a place where people want to live, where people want to move to, where they want to stay once they are here, where parents want to send their children to go to our colleges and where businesses want to locate and bring much needed jobs to our community. I have heard time after time by you and others that we need to be more diligent and more aggressive in our enforcement of our existing ordinances. I agree that we always can improve on almost everything we do, but to say that we aren't doing anything is simply not true. Few of you know how much time our city attorney, Mr. Castleberry spends in court every week, successfully prosecuting the violations written by our code enforcement department. It has become a full-time job for him and his firm. I'm also intrigued by those who would tell us not to come on your property, but instead want us to go to the blighted property down the street and go onto their property. Kind of hypocritical, don't you think? As I, as was mentioned at the last meeting, we have received many, many emails from realtors across the county. Only a few came from individuals who actually live in our city. Every email was an identical copy and paste communication drafted by some official of their association. Only a very few of these exhibited any independent thoughts or opinions. I responded to everyone who wrote and in turn I received a few responses. Here's an example of one such email response. Mr. Gauss, thank you for getting back with me. I read the Illinois County Association of Realtors' concerns prior to doing my due diligence and reading the proposed ordinance. I jumped the gun on forwarding the LCAR email. I say full speed ahead, even though there are ordinances in place to address this issue, in my opinion, this will certainly create an incentive as there will be more money on the table for the parties to play with. It was nice to know that at least one realtor actually read the ordinance, but my guess is that most didn't before they sent their email. Once again, I appreciate all of you that are here tonight and rest assured that I will continue to do what I feel is the best for our whole community. Thank you.
I do have a question that was asked of me. So if this, this were to move forward, what is the, is there an opportunity for citizen recall of ordinance that's passed by the commission?
Referendum?
Yes.
Yes, there is referendum.
So that would?
You would have to get, I believe it's ten percent of the citizens, citizens, and they could, they could move, you could move forward with.
Withdraw from that. Okay, thank you. Um, statement I would like to share, um, you know, I, I believe it was the um, telegram that shared the link to the Realtor Association email blast out today. And I think I received about thirty emails today and replied to all of them. And surprisingly enough, um, I don't believe any of them were realtors. These were residents that lived in the city. And when I replied and I asked them and I said, you know, can you give me a little bit specific beyond the, the form letter? And how does this impact you? It was, it was really telling and um, I think there were a lot of great examples that were shared by email. I encourage them to come tonight or to share them with the rest of the commissioners. Um, because this is, this is why they had feedback. You know, I, I think back to this example, um, very similar to the two thousand and fifteen school bond. Where we had a, a perfect plan that was great in my head. And um, we had a bond committee that was behind it and the school board that supported it. And when we went out to sell it to the public, um, we were dealt with a resounding blow of a no vote. And that really forced us, um, from a school district, me as a superintendent, members of that committee to take a hard stop, a deep breath, and really listen to our community, to seek out those who were saying that they didn't like the configuration of schools, uh, some of the items that were on the list, how um, things were proposed. And I think this is really the perfect example here, very similar, that, you know, as a commissioner, I've received two emails in favor of this. And I've heard two people speak on the record in favor of this. And everyone else was a no. So I think this is the perfect example for us to say that we think we have the greatest plan ever. However, we have not done an effective job selling it to our community. What we hear from our community, very much similar to the bond issue, was our parents wanted kids in the sixth grade um, to be, and excuse me, in the fifth grade to be at the elementary school. What I'm hearing our residents say is that they What I'm hearing our residents say is that they want more enforcement, that they want consistent enforcement. I hear Commissioner Castleberry talk about strategic enforcement, and I think that's a great idea. I don't think anyone here would say that if we were to identify the 50 most blighted homes in the city of Adrian, that we don't go out and most importantly, not go out with the legal aspect, but go out with that application to that mishta grant. And provide a friendly, warm hand. I think of when I was gone, this, this, when my neighbor was gone this winter, it snowed. And I knew he was out of town, so I plowed his drive. When I was gone, he cut my grass. And I think that's what we need to get back to is making sure that we extend the mishta grant, that we work with our residents, that we enforce. I know that a group of commissioners went to Woodhaven recently. And the important piece there was if enforcement cannot be followed, then this is for naught. And when I think of the fact that for the last three years, we have been enforcing rental properties, we should all be in agreement then that over the last three years, every rental property in the city of Adrian has been brought up to code. And we know that's not the case. I also feel important to say that we heard example after example of, you know, when this house comes up for sale, when this house comes up for sale. We have residents that I've worked with that want the blight addressed now, not waiting until the example of the house coming up for sale. Aging in place, we've heard examples of that. This is not going to prevent that. From what I'm hearing, it's, well, we'll catch it eventually once it comes up for sale. Enforcement, I think, is strategic and we need to identify our most blighted homes, work on those, emphasize those, get the mishta grants rolling, and make sure that we're able to address this. But most importantly, walk away tonight knowing that we listened to our residents and as a result of that, we changed our mind and that despite the fact that we thought we had a good plan, we have to go back and create a better plan that our residents can respect and honor. Thank you.
This has been a difficult time. And whatever the outcome, people are going to be unhappy, disappointed, and maybe angry. I have spent a lot of time researching, thinking, listening, praying, and looking at all the positives and negatives with this, with this topic. We definitely have a blight issue, and I think most will agree on that. So how do we go about rectifying the issue? What are other communities doing that has worked? Will this also work for us? What is currently not working for us? I have been involved with a group committed to blight since 2020, and I am committed to reducing blight and beautifying our city. I went several years ago to personally visit with the elected officials in city administration in a city nearby, and a point of sale ordinance was one of many items that they mentioned had worked for them. But just because it works for one city does not mean it'll work for ours. That community has an average income of $76,000 and a poverty rate of 15.32% compared to us with an average income of $56,000 and a poverty rate of 23.36%. That is a 20,000 average income difference and an 8% poverty rate difference. Although I do not know the rental rate of that community, I highly doubt it is 56%, which ours is approximated to be. These are vast differences that might make point of sale not right for us. I had not previously made a decision when it came to this matter, despite many rumors that I had, until this past Thursday, after meeting with another nearby community and their city administration that has point of sale. They asked a lot of questions and one of them had even previously briefly lived in Adrian. I was asked, if you already follow the International Property Maintenance Code, why not just enforce it? In their opinion, it was not necessary to have a point of sale ordinance if we just enforced what we already had. As I pondered and prayed on this, I was challenged by someone that an admirable and a good leader will do what is best for the people, no matter the noise level of the opposition. And I could not agree more. But what an admirable leader will also do is listen to everyone, opposing or not, and then do their due diligence and make a decision based on the good of the whole community. I feel that every commissioner and myself have done just that. We have listened, we have done our homework. And no matter which way we vote, we will not make everyone happy, but we will respect each other and we hope that you will do the same. Because we can agree to disagree. We do not have all the answers to our blight issue, as shown by the fact that according to the Blight Committee, we have increased blight in the past years, even though we have added a code enforcement officer and been more diligent in taking action on code violations with rentals in court. And quite honestly, we just have not seen the drastic change in blight that we expected. So what is to say that point of sale would change it? Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. But I am concerned with the option that I think more will hold on to their deteriorating house than sell it if this ordinance passes, only adding to the blight. I do know that we as a city need to be more aggressive with letting those in need know about the available grant money. And we need to come together as a community to help the elderly and those in need and secure even more grant money in the future. I also know that we need to enforce the International Property Maintenance Code that we already have. We may not all agree on this ordinance, and that is okay, but the division it is causing with so many in our community is highly concerning. Let me be clear, this is not an east side versus west side issue, like I have heard many times. In my opinion, it is an entire issue. 95% of all the people who approached me outside of city chambers, not in here, I had a lot of people approach me outside, with concerns and complaints on this ordinance were west side citizens. So I believe it is an entire community concern. I have promised to represent the community and that is why I must vote no on this ordinance. I did not come to this decision easily or quickly, but I am voting no as I feel I must based on the facts. I thought the first time point of sale was presented, that it was not the right time for our community, but could be in the future. But I now believe, especially after meeting with another community, that we are simply not the right community for this.
I have a motion by Commissioner Castleberry with a second by Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
No.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
No.
Commissioner Roberts.
No.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
The ordinance passes by a four, three vote, four yes, three no.
Moving on to Resolution R 24-023 from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to authorize the fire chief to purchase a demo set of Hearst extrication tools. May I get a motion to, may I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Court.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments?
We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please. Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution passes by a unanimous vote.
Resolution R 24-024 is from administration. It is a resolution to ratify entry into a contract for relocation services in relation to 577 South Main Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments?
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
And Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution is approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to public comment, just to reiterate, we will start inside the city chambers and you must state your name and your place of residence. And also remember not to make any attacks on city officials, city employees, the personal attacks, sorry, the commissioners or myself, and also to not have any profanity. Thank you.
Jeff rising seat of Adrian, so I appreciate all the thought that went into your comments and everything everybody said. I look forward to working with the city as a real estate broker here in Adrian with the rules that come out and see how we go through them. And I know this is public comments, you're not obligated to answer my question, but is your code of conduct regarding comments only apply to personal attacks on individuals or does it apply to entire groups of people? Because Commissioner Gauss just pretty much slammed the entire profession of realtors saying that we all sent a pre-written email and none of us read the ordinance except for one person, he thought. So as he's mocking, mocking my entire profession, basically, is that kind of conduct going to be tolerated by the commission? Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Murray, Adrian, Michigan. I just wanted to comment briefly. I was on that group with the mayor and others from the community that did some investigation about this. And of course, this ordinance was one of the many different things that are involved in improving the, the blight situation in any community. And what I'm really excited about is to hear so many people in our community come to you and tell you how important the issue of blight is in our community. And I'd like to hold all of you accountable to actually act on that. Bob, you talked about looking at this and coming up with a better way to approach this. I'd like to hold you and all of you accountable to do the thing that you say you're going to do, which is improve the blight. It's a tough issue. You know it's a tough issue. You've had a lot of people here. There are a lot of different ways of approaching blight. And it's up to you as the leaders of our community to be sure that this happens. Mayor, you know that in all those interviews that we did with the out of town people, the mayors and the, and the people, the commissioners who led these groups, they said one thing, that it takes the leadership of the community to move this project ahead, that if you don't do it, it'll never get done. I've lived in Adrian for 50 years and I can assure you that there's been many, many decades when nothing's been done. So if anything, whatever we do, let's work together to move ahead. And I'm going to hold you all accountable to be sure that you're doing your share. You've heard it from all of us. Let's make Adrian a better community and thank you for your leadership.
Carrie Smith, City of Adrian. I would just like to say thank you to Bob, Banky, Commissioner Mary Roberts, and to Angie Heath. I think I teared up when Angie was talking because we are not like other communities and equity is doing what is fair for all people, not just, but helping the people that can't get there. Brad spoke earlier about a property that's blighted on Scott Street. My son, a 100% disabled veteran is buying that home and has the full support of our family and our funds to make that house a beautiful home. However, the sellers, you know, this has been going on a long time. He had an appraisal today. We're already looking at, he's over $1,000 in just on his own inspection, his own appraisal. There's protections in place already. This is overreach and it's overkill. And you're putting pressure on people who are trying to do the right thing. You're putting pressure on families who are trying to sell property. You're stall, you're stalling it and you say it's not going to slow things down. If these people have to come, they've already lowered the price 15,000. They've already offered to give 13,000 towards the electrical, just the electrical, which by the way, you can't see from the outside. So how deep are we in this? They've given up 30 grand just to try to get the deal done. So if this doesn't work, now what? You're not lenders. And I mean, other than Kelly, I mean, I don't know who's done real estate, but these deals are so tricky and it's going to make things very hard for buyers and sellers. I'm all for blight. I, let's join a committee, let's go to these actual houses. Hey, why do you have a mattress in your front yard? Do you need help getting this pulled away? Can we help you do this? There has to be something that's more proactive than yes, just a code enforcement, but it's going to make it harder for my son and his fiancee, who are so excited about this house. We lived, we actually rented on Scott Street for nine years. My dad lived on Scott Street. I never dreamed that my son at 24 would be buying a house on Scott Street. We love that neighborhood. But the point is, he was able to with the realtors negotiate a fair deal on the house based on the condition it was in, negotiate repairs and get them done to the guidelines and satisfaction of the lender who is going to have the lien on the property. And they did not need the city to tell them that that was an acceptable collateral. All of that's in place, paid for, and it's not fair. And so I appreciate, I don't want to sound like a spoiled child, but thank you to those who can see that.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. I can't believe you guys passed that ordinance. I think each and every one of you that passed it, that'd be voted out the next time. That's just me thinking, but like I said before, you know, you guys are worried about blight. You got rid of, you know, the, I, I used to be a garbage man. Okay, I, I worked for Allied Waste, whatever. We used to pick up the city of Adrian. But you got rid of that and then you, you got Stevens. You went to a six bag limit, then you went to the toter service. That's where your blight come from. People can't afford to have, throw their garbage away. Now they got a toter. You put three bags into it and it doesn't take all the trash. Now you gotta come into the city, pay $10 for a tag. They don't want to pay $10 for a tag. Now you've got stuff stacking up because you know why? You don't want to pay $10 for a tag. You guys don't want to pay for, you know, a city cleanup. Why? I have no idea. But you gotta, we're paying for, we're paying for garbage service, 30 some dollars every three months or whatever it is. I have no idea. My wife pays. But we, that used to be in our taxes. But why are we paying it now? I have no idea. Our taxes keep going up, but we're still paying more bills out of it. I have no idea why. Getting back to the blight, we still got that house. You guys tore down them, them buildings down in the city? Why? Downtown. Why'd you tear them down? They were condemned, right? Why'd you tear them down? Were they falling down? Well, that house is falling down across the street from me. I think that's more important than them city buildings. I could give a, I could care less if them buildings are falling down downtown. I could care less. This building's been affecting my house for two years. They just sold the house next door to it and I'm sure the people that bought the house next door to it is really happy because of that house next door. Really happy. They're also happy that the raccoons are running out of it. But I bet nothing happens to it. I bet nobody does nothing to it and I bet it's going to be their next winner. Because you guys don't care. Your city ordinance doesn't care. The ordinance officer doesn't care. Nobody cares. Your city ordinance doesn't care. The ordinance officer doesn't care. Nobody cares. And nothing will happen to it.
Aaron Trescher, City of Adrian resident. To switch the gears a little bit, I wanted to thank the commission for again proclaiming June as Pride Month in the City of Adrian. I don't want this proclamation to become overlooked by the rest of tonight's meeting because it truly has a significant impact on the quality of one's life if their life is publicly supported on a city and local level. I appreciate it and the rest of the community does as well. Thanks.
Patty Clark again from City of Adrian. Certainly to Mayor Heath's point, we can agree to disagree. I appreciate the no votes. Of course, I understand why some people have voted yes. To Bob's point, I would love to challenge us to find out the top most blighted properties because I could substitute the word blight with poor in a lot of cases. And sometimes I think I read the ordinances. It was for owner occupied. We also have a lot of rental properties. Years ago, Joe Satorelli, Department of Human Services was in my Rotary Club and he would frequently bring us projects from senior citizens who needed their homes painted. Just needed help. I stand here, I'm a person that loves to be involved in a community service. And I volunteer to work with any group that would go forward to help make some of these people's homes what they want them to be and help them do projects. We used to have Rock the Block with Habitat. More of that community outreach, more of that neighbor helping neighbor. And I think you'll find a positive snowball effect. When your house starts looking better, your street starts looking better, you get a little bit more energized, you get a little bit more capable, you get a little bit more pride. So I'm just offering that and I hope that there are other people in this room and online that would also volunteer to do that. Thank you.
Neil Dunaway, 423 Elm Street, Adrian, Michigan. I'm all on board with what you said. And Bob, I have a project for you. One of your former employees. He's already started the process of painting his house, but it's taken years. He has a lot of challenges. And I think it would be great, a lot of us who are complaining or whatever, is just roll up our sleeves and put on our boots and grab a paintbrush, a rake or something. It's not that hard. And I mean, right now, I bought once a week, every other week, I carry a pail around the block and I clean the grates and pick up the trash. So often in the 26 years I've lived in my house, people said, do you work for the city? I said, no. But I see something that needs to be done. I see it, I do it. So maybe, and that's a TQM business strategy back from the 90s. Maybe more of us need to adopt TQM. You see it, you own it, you do it.
Hearing no more public comment, we will now open, probably coming up to those on Zoom. For the same rules apply. You'll see the time on the screen. Please state your full name and your place of residence.
Kent Tokar, City of Adrian. I guess I first want to start by apologizing if my comments were misinterpreted as personal attacks. Mayor Heath, I did not get a response from the city administrator, so I came into your office. I took time out of my day. I wrote several emails and I talked to you about those lights north of Adrian. My comment was not meant to be personal. It was just a reminder that the lights are still that way. Mr. Miller, I know you don't own the house. I did send an email out to all the commissioners. If I send it out to all, nobody knows if one of the commissioners is going to respond to it. So I put your name to it. It was nothing more than that. I know you don't own that house, but I guess I did bring that to your attention and I'm just reminding you that after a year, those things are still in place. There's no screens, there's siding missing, no handrail and the steps are in disrepair. You guys say you have a enforcement program. I guess I'm just saying it doesn't work and I'm just trying to bring it to your attention. So please don't misinterpret reminders as being personal attacks for something that hasn't been followed up on. In regards to enforcement, I brought several ideas to the commission. One was pick a monthly thing, like one time of the month, you pick porches. And you know, you did it with totes. You had enhanced enforcement for totes. Pick different items, like one day you're going to pick building materials in the front of a house and you're going to enforce that that month. Or the next month, you're going to enforce living room furniture on couches. Or you're going to enforce totes or trash or something. You know, pick something and enforce it, let people know and then have your enforcement officers write up tickets. The other thing I gave to the city is I made up a template for a sign. Why not post a sign on someone's property that, hey, it's blighted. It lets the residents know that, hey, the city is addressing this property. Right now, we don't know what you're doing. You guys had that whole paint ordinance. I've seen so many houses that were painted and the paint job was terrible. I mean, it was, I mean, if someone went and got their house painted, does quality count or does it mean just slapping a coat of paint on it and you're going to pass the inspection? These are all things, you know, you guys passed this ordinance. Those are things that you guys need to look at and start addressing. Thank you for your time.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any Commissioner comments?
I'd just like to say one thing I heard very clearly and it's been a pattern is that there's an issue with our current enforcement. And there's been an issue raised about individuals with current enforcement. And in hopes that I can help alleviate that or help. If you live next to something that's blighted, if you live next to a home that's not into code, you can email me and I guarantee I'm going to follow up with the city administrator. And I'm going to see and I'm going to take action and I'll give you the feedback that you. But this point of sale is not the only thing. I say that we need to help people and like I say, not give tickets. Enforce the laws, open Michta grants up, use that as part of it. But if you don't tell me where this house is and you don't give me the opportunity to speak with our city administrator, then there's little I can do other than when I drive around and see homes and look when I go through the city. That's all I'm asking you to do.
I just want to say that this was a very difficult decision. It really was. And I was really on the fence for a long time and I will fully support, since it passed, I'm going to fully support it. I know that I voted no against it. But we have to work together and we're going to see if this works. We've been trying other things and we work together and we all can agree to disagree up here and still work for the common good. And what's really important at this point is just working on this actual process. What does this look like? The communication to the public so people are aware, the communication to the Realtors so they are aware. And as we plan this out, it's not happening tomorrow. I just want to reiterate that. It is a six month timeout before this will even take effect. And we've already been talking to communities that do this to get ideas. Our city administrator has looked into it as well. So you know, this is a process. Give your input on that process, you know, keep, keep giving input and being involved, not just when it's a controversial issue, but let's, let's work on this together and let's, let's work to, you know, even though I didn't vote for it, I'm still going to support it fully to try to make it the best that it can be and and make it best for everyone in our community and make sure that it is safeguarding everyone in our community. We can all hopefully work towards that goal. That would be what I would like to see.
Just want to take an opportunity to thank Michelle for reaching out and following up on the pride flag for the downtown area and helping ensure that we have the most current flag that's recognized by the community flying as well. So thank you for that, Michelle. I do want to voice my concern when it comes to the evaluation of the city administrator. As newly elected commissioner, I was informed that the evaluation of Mr. Elliott takes place, the first meeting in June. My job with the ISD as we planned to disembark to go to Japan was scheduled around my first meeting tonight. And I will return Sunday at midnight before our next scheduled meeting. With the evaluation being moved to next Monday, this is an opportunity that has robbed from me to be in the closed session to actively participate in the evaluation and to provide feedback. While I can give feedback to Mr. Elliott, we all know that the only feedback that matters is when it's in the closed session that takes place. I would propose, because there is no requirement outside of the fact, a concern of meeting the standard that his stepping crease would meet the timeline for July, that we have his evaluation at the next meeting. I would also like to echo the fact that there is no written evaluation that's been shared with me. So while I may have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Elliott, I don't know what I'm evaluating about. There's no rubric, there's no scores. Is it on blight remediation? Is it on a balanced budget? Is it on building the fund balance, community relations? None of those things have been shared with me, nor am I aware that a written evaluation for him exists. Moving on to the next topic, I have shared some examples with Monroe and how they're open and transparent when it comes to tracking the progress of blight with the city commission prior to moving on to taking legal action. I'd like to see something of that as we move forward and continue this conversation with blight. We are, as the mayor says, we are going to be moving forward with the point of sale. But I think if we stop at the point of sale only, that is going to fall far short from helping this gentleman and the house across the street from him with the raccoons running in and out. I'm concerned because I was involved in an organization that was in Chicago. And anytime we wanted to do anything, we had to call the alderman. We got to get the alderman to approve the number of parking spaces that are out there. I don't want to be an alderman. I want to be a commissioner. And I want our residents to call the city to talk to a person, to receive the customer service that they deserve and to have an answer and to have a resolution. Not that they have to go to us for us to follow through. So I would hope that that becomes a goal as we look at these blighted homes. I would also propose that we create the most blighted home in Adrian and have residents send us your neighbors the most blighted home. So that we can then begin to start that list and answer that challenge that Mark said so that we know where to start addressing, where to get those Michta funds, where to get Rotary out there painting and opportunities for us to help and serve. I have a chainsaw. I love to use it. Thank you.
Can I add on to mine? I forgot to thank everybody for the great Memorial Day that we had in the City of Adrian. Oftentimes those events get overlooked. I thought it was a wonderful thing to tribute those that have lost everything for our country and I appreciate that.
I want to go back to the point of sale ordinance and I am grateful that everybody shared their thoughts. And I hope that you will continue. As we've developed a policy, we're going to have to develop procedures for that policy. And many of your concerns will be addressed in the development of that policy or that, excuse me, those procedures. So I'm hopeful that you will stay involved and have conversation with us about how we develop the procedures for the policy. If you get a chance, I think it was about two summers ago, I went to Detroit and spent a day with Detroit Blightbusters. John George put this organization together quite a few years ago. They have a giant nonprofit. They've redone a great many buildings and homes in the city of Detroit. If you get a chance to look it up, please do. There are a lot of great ideas. So where point of sale is one tool in our toolbox or code enforcement is another tool in our toolbox. He has some ingenious ideas about how to combat blight and what a city and a community can do and how they can come together and do some of that work. So I hope that all of you will look into that a little bit more and it sounds like there's a lot of people ready to roll up some sleeves and that's really exciting and good to hear. So again, thank you all for all of your comments. I hope we can continue this conversation. Thank you.
I have been quiet tonight for a variety of reasons. I know that I've heard that people thought that our minds were made up before we got here. And I can tell you for me personally, that is farther, furthest from the truth. The members of the public that I spoke with over the last week, I told every single one of them, including some of the people in this room, I am 50/50. I do not know how I am going to vote on this ordinance. And I did not know until after listening to everything tonight and really thinking about where we're at as the City of Adrian. Do I think point of sale is a tool in our toolbox now? Yes, yes. And I believe that it will help a certain number of homes being sold each year. It will. Do I think that we need to have resources available for new home buyers or the elderly that want to either buy their brand new home and don't have the ability to put in a roof and the elderly person who's selling it doesn't either? Yes, we are going to have to address those issues. We will. One gentleman said, you guys don't care. That is furthest from the truth for all of us sitting up here. Yes, I get a little emotional because this is important to us. We did not run because we don't care. We are up here because we care about this city. We care so much that we take so much of our personal time to research, to talk to other communities, to talk to you, to listen to you. We care. So please, please don't say that we don't care. There's been a couple other things about the ordinance that I'm not going to go into tonight. But there is one thing that bothered me the most is that there is there is a belief, I guess, that this is coming from our city administrator. Our city administrator did not bring this to our attention. And I want you to know that. He doesn't get to vote. He brings us information that we as commissioners, Mayor Heath, Commissioner Gauss, they asked for information to be brought to us about point of sale. Do not say that this is something that our city administrator approves of or believes in. That's not up to him to make that decision. All his job is to get us the information that we are asking. It's up to us, your representatives, to make the decisions. I do appreciate all of the emails and phone calls and meetings that I've had over the last couple of weeks. I have not been able to reply to several of them from this weekend for personal reasons, but I will get back to everyone that has replied in the last couple of days that I have not had a chance to. It is voted on and we will proceed with this. Does it mean that it has to be forever? No, as I spoke with someone today. No, as I spoke with someone today, I said, "Okay, change is hard. Maybe we try this for a couple of years. Maybe it works and we don't need it anymore because people understand what they need to do. Maybe it doesn't, and we either amend it or we rescind it." Ordnances are changed and rescinded every day, every day, in communities across the country. And that's okay, too. So at this point, I hope that we can all be on board with this ordinance. It's a tough change for some people, and I get that. But let's work together, not against each other, please. Thank you.
Now we have a discussion regarding purchase of real estate. Commissioner Castleberry has requested to go into closed session for the discussion regarding purchase of real estate. Is there a second?
A second.
Who said that? Sorry. Oh, thank you. Okay, we have Commissioner Castleberry with the motion and a second by Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will come back out here to adjourn the meeting after we are done in our closed session.
Do I?
Is there an evaluation tool?
Uh, not as such. You're free to employ one. It's wish. And it's probably somewhat difficult for the commission to utilize that given the limited exposure to what the city attorney does.
Yeah, my, my concern, you know, goes back, you know, as we evaluate people based on no, no standards. So, you know, are we, how do we feel about Burke's communication? How do we feel about Burke's work on light? How do we feel about Burke's work in the court? Those things we may or may not have. And I think this is an opportunity for us to discuss how, how we receive our information from Burke and how that meets the standard of what the commission wants in terms of, I don't know how, I, I hear that he's working on light, but I don't know how many cases of light are being worked on. Is there a expectation for when he communicates to us? Mr. Bulley communicated a lot more on things, and as you said, maybe a little bit too much. So is there some expectation there for building those to set for Burke to meet? Because at the same time, I think Burke's on the opposite side of, I don't know what the commission wants from me.
Yeah, well, not, not that I exactly know what you want from him and that, but if you tell me, it's better. Every relationship with an attorney is an at-will relationship. So, talking about it for a period of time doesn't, it only ties to our own things. When you contract with a law firm for a period of time, all you do is guarantee that, you can always terminate them, but if you contracted with them for a defined period of time, you now guaranteed them the income for that period. I don't recommend doing that, doing a closed end at the point. But at any point, you're free to evaluate something like that's still the counsel of law.
But, and I think the concern that we had with previous city attorney was that, the, you know, I don't want to go down the road of saying, first, thanks for, thanks for your time, and we're moving on to someone else. I want him to know what the standards of the commission are so that he can meet those standards. I think that's, you know, that's the relationship between employee and employer with an effective evaluation tool. And how that gets created, you know, obviously within Burke, from Burke as well as the, knows his job better than any of us do.
I think this is, if I can speak just for a second, I think this is the perfect way to evaluate a situation. I would really, really hesitate to do something in writing for this position. I think this is exactly what we should be doing, talking about what's working, what isn't. How do we go forward? What do we feel so far about the firm? I mean, I, to be able to have a list of things that we're going to evaluate, he and his firm on this, I, we'd work longer to get that written evaluation bound than, than just getting the valuation taken care of.
Well, let's put that work.
I'm not.
All right.
I, I see no point in it. I know that you've done it in, in your educational process. Myself and professional and business process, we don't, we don't ever do that, ever. You might do it in educational terms, but we don't ever do it. So I just feel that it's more important for all of us to just. We will now begin the work-study session for the Adrian City Commission on June third, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call please. Mayor Heed, present. Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes, present.
Senator Roberts. President Spencer Miller.
Yes, president.
Commissioner Gouss.
President.
All commission members. This time I will turn it over to our city administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. The item we have scheduled for this evening's work session is regarding the permanent appointment of the city attorney. As you recall, Castleberry's firm was appointed on an interim basis six months ago, almost six months ago. That time period roughly ends at the end of June. So I wanted to put that in front of you for discussion regarding the permanent appointments so we can take care of that before we get the expiration of that period. Ideally, your next regular meeting, which is June seventeenth. Taken care of before July. I would certainly encourage you to stick with the appointment you made. Great experiences with Mr. Castleberry's firm. They've accomplished a lot for us on very short notice, including jumping in virtually the next day into the Porter case, which we're still deep in at this point, the complex litigation. Great success on the code enforcement front. Well, very good communication with the code enforcement staff. Draw your own conclusions about the advice to you all. Have your own basis for having an opinion about that. I'll just turn the discussion over to you. Happy to answer any questions that you have about what we're doing. Stay the course. Stay in force at this point.
One thing I remember talking about, we often talk, and I want to make this clear, that we talked about Burke's been a point. But actually, Burke and his law firm has been a point. Is that correct or not?
That is correct. Our relationship with the firm.
I just want to make sure that we get all the assets of the firm that I think at the first meeting we all agreed on. That was the best possible thing we could do with the people that are in your group.
Right. Yeah, it is important to have that. Particularly when you're involved in litigation. You need that to be able to affect it. My firm's been doing it for a long time. Of course, with the firm. Lucas is involved in complex insurance. I know him from my support field partnership. Great doubt.
I have an evaluation tool that we're going to go through on. Do I? Is there an evaluation tool?
Not as such. You're free to employ one. If you wish. And it's probably somewhat difficult for the commission to utilize that, given the limited exposure to what the city attorney does.
Yeah, my concern, you know, goes back, you know, as we evaluate people based on no no standards. So, you know, are we how do we feel about Burke's communication? How do we feel about Burke's work on light? How do we feel about Burke's work in the court? Those things we may or may not have. And I think this is an opportunity for us to discuss how we receive our information from Burke and how that meets the standard of what the commission wants in terms of, I don't know how, I hear that he's working on light, but I don't know how many cases of light are being worked on. Is there a expectation for when he communicates to us? Mr. Blue communicated a lot more on things, and as you said, maybe a little bit too much. So is there some expectation there for building those to set for Burke to meet? Because at the same time, I think Burke's on the opposite side of, I don't know what the commission wants from me.
Yeah, well. Not if I exactly know what you want from him and that, but if you tell me. Every relationship with an attorney is an at-will relationship. So talking about it for a period of time doesn't, it only ties around. When you contract with a law firm for a period of time, all you do is guarantee that. You can always terminate them, but if you contracted with them for a defined period of time, you now guaranteed them the income for that period. I don't recommend doing that, doing a closed end at the point. But at any point, you're free to evaluate something like that's still the counsel of law.
But, and I think the concern that we had with previous city attorney was that the you know, I don't want to go down the road of saying, Burke, thanks for, thanks for your time, and we're moving on to someone else. I want him to know what the standards of the commission are so that he can meet those standards. I think that's, you know, that's the relationship between an employee and employer with an effective evaluation. And how that gets created, you know, obviously within Burke as well as the knows his job better than any of us do.
I think this is, if I can speak just for a second, I think this is the perfect way to evaluate a situation. I would really, really hesitate to do something in writing for this position. I think this is exactly what we should be doing, talking about what's working, what isn't. How do we go forward? What do we feel so far about the firm? I mean, to be able to have a list of things that we're going to evaluate in this firm is, I, we'd work longer to get that written evaluation bound than, than just getting the valuation taken care of.
Well, let's put that work.
I'm not.
Sorry.
No, I see no point in it. I know that you've done it in, in your educational process. Myself and professional and business process, we don't, we don't ever do that, ever. You might do it in educational terms, but we don't ever do it. So I just feel that it's more important for all of us to just talk about where we see ourselves going in the future. What's working now? What didn't work in the past?
I'll, what do you want?
I'll differ for other people to talk.
Putting an expectation for Castleberry, Lucas Lockhorn, and without giving them the expectations beforehand is, is not not professional to them because they didn't know the last six, seven months what we might, what we're evaluating them on. If we have so far now, I think it's one of those, are we going to continue with your law firm or not? If we want in the future to say, here is some things that we yeah. Close to it. In the future, if there are some things that, you know, we would like to see more communication and court information or whatever, whatever those, you know, the information is, then we can work on that in the future. But I don't think we should go back to this last six, seven months and say, oh, well, you should have done that. You should have done that. You should have done that because you didn't know that that was where our expectations. So I, I don't believe that that would be fair and equitable to your law firm to put prior expectations on. Going forward, okay, I'm not, I'm not opposed to say, and we did that with the previous.
We used to get kind of a status of, here's what I've done in the last two weeks.
Right, guidelines and.
Keep in mind, you got a bill for that.
And, and that's fine. We, I, I agree that we where I'm agreeing with, we need to know, I mean, I made a statement tonight, my comments, that our city attorney is in, in court many times every week. It's a full-time job. And I know that's true. But it would like, I would like to have a little more detail about what cases or how many cases and not just throw it out there that, now he's working really hard. We know he's working really hard, but what's he working on?
But that's going forward.
That's right. That's absolutely right.
In that sense, that's right. So if, if, if the commission wants to put together the five things we want in the next, you know, going forward, that's one thing. That's a separate conversation than what we're talking about tonight.
The other thing I want to say is when you work with evaluations, you're working with perception. And that perception is that individual's reality. So my perception of this may be like, no, yes, maybe. Yours may be, no, 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 no. His may be, yes, 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 yes. So if we're going to start putting parameters on what we expect from Burke, we have to really think about what this is. Because I've worked with many people and the perception that they have are differently across. Whether they say they base it on data or reality or whatever. When, like, and I'm going to education, if someone was put on a plan, we used to have the other presidents move in over the plan. So it wasn't just the council. So we have to be sure that we're just not going to say, well, he had some part for me, but apart from you, some part from there. We got to work on, how are we going to make this measurable and equitable thing? So that two people on this could just give one, 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 or zero, zero, zero for rating out five, and he becomes an effect. When you have five people giving the fact rate.
That's ahead.
And I think to go to the point of like, what you were saying, Greg, you know, we don't necessarily know what a city attorney should be doing. You know, like to evaluate, we know what you should be doing, but like, to really evaluate the attorney, like that's, that's tough. Like, I'm going to use personal examples. So my board does my evaluation and they literally never step foot in the classroom, but they're doing my evaluation. So it, it doesn't always go really well because I'm like, you're not in the classroom and you're giving me an evaluation. It should be, you know, the people that come in and do the observations, which I do get those, but so there's this, it's, there's like this dysfunctional element to that when it's something that we don't, we're not observing, we're not doing those day-to-day to, to give an evaluation is tough tonight.
And I would think, you know, there's previous discussion related to city administrator evaluations. So while there's examples out there about creek and those sort of things, I mean, it's going to cost money. But, you know, there are individuals or firms that can create, work with us and create a, an evaluation tool based on that. It's just like, you know, Dave Harper's highly effective evaluation records fifty-seven different things that he was evaluated on. And they had a rubric and that rubric says what's effective, what's minimally effective. So you don't get that situation where here's the evidence of self-evaluation, here's the evidence that supports it. But at the same time, you can't give a zero because here's all the evidence that supports that there was significant work in those areas. But that again takes, every school board member by Michigan laws required to attend training or they can't evaluate their superintendent.
Do you have any experience with other municipalities valuing the firm here?
No, ever. We represent over forty municipalities. I, I don't care if anyone, anyway, I'll talk about any, anything you want to talk about. But, I mean, what you're talking about, there's no, there's no master key out here because it doesn't exist. It's like Greg said, your attorney is either like it or you don't. If you don't, you get an attorney. But I would agree with what Commissioner Roberts said. There really hasn't been.
Oh, I agree.
At all, mission. However, it's because, because of what your setup is. It, it's not, you know, I work with Greg daily. We were talking. I wouldn't say every day, but at three times a week, we have a Zoom meeting on Wednesday afternoons. We have the staff meeting every other Monday. We meet with code enforcement two to three times a month on Tuesdays. And we go through every single light case that the city of Adrian has. I go in detail on each case and then I go to the courthouse and I hold the hearings. Commissioner Gauss has actually come and watched some of those. I mean, there is a lot of communication, a lot of. And what the administrator is saying is, I, I read some of those updates that Mr. Blue was providing. I didn't find them informative, really. What I know what we're doing. It's not to say anything bad about him, but it really is, it's enough to, oh, so we're, we're looking at some houses, but you're just getting built an hour, two hours to write it. And I'm not saying I won't do it. I'll do it if you want me to do it, but I'm telling him. It's a waste of money. What's really valuable are these meetings that we're having, the discussions that we're having. I mean, the code enforcement officers, when we sit down and talk, I mean, we're talking about like trash on the steps, you know, we get right down to the details so that when I go meet with these people, you know, I know what I'm talking. I think we have been very successful. When we walk out, when we walk out of court, we do most of these on Tuesdays. We walk out of court, I mean, I think I did fifteen last month, last Tuesday. We did fifteen, twelve resolve. That was great.
I, I wouldn't know that. I, I, I don't know that.
I understand that. But I don't know how to tell you that anyways, because even when I tell you they're resolved. Really know what that means? I, I mean, they, every one of them means something different. You know, we have, I can tell you that your code enforcement officials, they, they go after the rental properties very, very hard. They, they, they really do put the work into that. And contrary to what you hear out in public comment of people not working, I find that hard to believe based on the number of citations that I'm getting. You know, and it increased from the time I got here. And I don't know if it's because of our meetings, you know, that we're, I know the administrator will point out houses as people. I mean, it's, it's really good stuff. You guys are, you should be proud of what your enforcement is doing because they're working hard and they're doing a good job.
I disagree. You talk to him every day. I appreciate my talk to Greg. Literally, I don't think he's never been on the phone.
I can tell you, we talked.
I disagree with that.
At least three times.
Yeah, I have to reiterate what I mentioned out there. I have apartments for the last thirty-five years and since they started to go through my apartments, they spend a couple hours at my house. I only have two apartments. And they think that there's a problem with, sure enough, ten days, two weeks later, how's that coming? Has that fixed yet? Well, we're going to come over and see that.
You know, and the other thing that they don't get enough credit for, and I know this, now we're not talking about me, but they don't get enough credit for the fact that they go after these problems for months at a time before they ever write a citation. You know, no one can say that these guys are like just out stroking tickets because they're not. I mean, they've got letters that they've written to these people. They've had multiple conversations. When I sit down with Jake and we have these conversations, he tells me about the ten contacts he had before we ever made it. They really aren't doing a good job. But anyways, back to the communication. I, I mean, if that's what the commission wants me to do, I don't mind writing and just telling you that you're, you're paying for something that I, I won't, I don't know if it's the best use of your mind. But if you want or people want me to do it, I will do it. I go back to the piece that, again, transparency and communication. I, if someone asked me how many cases has Burke taken? I would say, I don't know. I don't know if you, I never do until today if you've. In six months, we've probably handled a hundred plus. I'm guessing. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that. And we have two employees. It would be helpful to at least have some type of overview or some type of two and a half. Oh, you have to, it's some type of information so that when we get that pushback that says you're not doing anything about light, we can say, well, there are nineteen cases that went on Tuesday. And I don't know how that, how that works in communication or something along those lines. And I, I agree with Mayor about moving forward because I'm not talking about going back. Yeah, and once again, you guys just, you have to tell me what you want. My understanding whenever you hired me was I talked to the administrative administrator and I tell you I over-communicate. Not really. I don't mind talking to him, but I'm sure he gets hurt. Oh, but we do talk about our cases often. A lot of it's not appropriate for the commission, to be honest with you. A lot of it is, is truly private convert, and when I say private, it's private to the city. It's attorney-client privilege that we don't need to have seven conversations. We need to have one conversation and we need to talk about strategy, you know? I can overshare with you, but I don't know that it helps you.
What you got before Mr. Blue's firm literally was just him adding you to the CC line, every single thing you know. And I can't talk about the history of that because it involved in a closed session also, but you know, one of the problems with what he did was, like Burke says, that's all attorney-client privileged communication. The broader you spread that, the more likely that somebody's not going to treat it appropriately.
And I'm not asking for that.
But I think, yeah, well, I think I, I hear you saying is you would like more like a report on prosecutions similar to the code enforcement before the city. It would be something, you know, something that's.
That's something that we can do during our weekly meeting and just have a fifteen or twenty-second rundown on numbers.
Would that be? Honestly, I'd rather write it because if you're going to prepare, by the time you prepare to have that twenty, it's not going to be twenty seconds.
Well, you just say numbers, twenty-four, forty.
I'd rather send you a, a written update because by the time I prepare, then we come in and, and talk about it. I, you know, if you, if you get it, if you have a problem, I would rather you communicate through the administrator to me. I don't mind if you call me, but the way you guys are set up, you run everything back through your administrator, which is good. Because then he's in the loop and he knows and he can relate to me. I can tell you in some municipalities, they don't have that, and so I might get a one-phone call and that's okay for me because I'm billing seven times, but it's not okay for you.
Well, and the problem comes into being, you have seven people telling you seven different things to do. And, and that, that's a big problem and we don't want that to happen.
I really like the way you're set up, but I could put something.
I don't want.
Updated on.
I personally don't want the numbers. I was making the suggestion of, it might help people, but I don't want the numbers.
It wouldn't be that bad because, I mean, I actually sit down and I write an order, physically write an order after each one of these hearings. So we did fifteen hearings and I wrote twelve orders because we settled the cases. So I know it at that time. I dumped it about two days later, but I could write, I could write something that's what more of you want to do.
Which again, forward, yes. So in two weeks, are we in agreement that we're going to put a resolution on to continue your employment for Castleberry, for, no, Castleberry, Lucas, Lucas and at all law firm. I know we can't vote on that tonight, but it's that, that, the plan.
I'd like to put that on for next week.
Two weeks.
Does, does anyone not want that on June seventh?
June seventh, Peter. I think there's two questions to ask. One, are we comfortable with moving, with Burke's performance and moving forward? And then there's the emphasis question that needs to be addressed as well.
Well, you know, in your tenure, how many people did you hire that were boarding up houses, bringing children, sons-in-law and things like that? By tenure.
That had direct supervisory roles.
Well, Kelly's another supervisor.
I mean, the fact is, you all got a vote. Right?
I have no concern from my standpoint, I'm the one who sees what they does that the commissioner Castleberry is doing anything to influence the work of attorney Castleberry. Quite the contrary, I don't think the one knows what the other one's doing in their professional roles, right? So I'm not worried about that, but you all have to agree.
But I missed something.
Why are you seeing unanimous vote? There's no question.
Did I miss something? Is there, is there a question of that I've raised before?
That's, I mean, that's still the issue that is out there.
I didn't hear from that from last time.
That hasn't been waived by the, the commission yet.
You can. Well, you can. Yeah, every time that you address an appointment that implicates that rule, it has to be by unanimous vote. So we had a unanimous vote last time, obviously, Kelly staying. And it will require unanimous vote this time.
The city of Adrian is a Commissioner Gauss said, full-time job, it's not quite, but it's pretty close, it really is. And I will tell you that in the last six months, I have had to change my firm significantly. If this is going to keep coming up, then just make your decision because I can't waffle. Okay, this is my business. This is, it has nothing to do with politics. I don't want to play games. If you want me as your attorney, I want to be here. City of Adrian resident, and I would like to be here, but there's no deficit. There's nothing going on. There's nothing. She gets just a little communication in you. But make a decision. I don't, I don't want to keep doing that. And, and my feedback from individuals since bringing out was, you know, concerns. Vote no? That's what you got to do, but I, I can't keep doing this. You're, you're, you're it's not a game. It's not a game. It's it's my business.
There are concerns about me. I'd like to ask what those concerns are. That you are questioning my integrity. If there are concerns, you should voice those concerns.
I think.
Not just say there's concerns. What exactly are?
The the concerns that I have heard is the the fact that um people say. That they don't like a commissioner and the city attorney being married.
Because?
You've heard that from the commissioner? No, I'll because. Bob, you've heard that from commissioners, so.
It's a pointless conversation.
I mean, there's, I think there's a nepotism clause that's there.
You see, it's there not to prohibit it. It's there to require you all to evaluate that question. And you need to be comfortable, absolutely.
What what, where have you seen any form of nepotism?
I mean, you've got a six-month test run here on the well. And so we've spent six months to see whether or not there's an issue. I haven't seen an issue. Well, I see it another day. You're aware of issue, but I wanna know about it.
About if you heard somebody from the commission mention something, I I think it's important for us to discuss it, but. People on the outside do not see where we are with this majority of the time. They don't see us functioning here. They don't see what we do here. Uh some of the important people that are here all the time witness how this this group functions, but. I would have little concern and then on this point, somebody was raising a question. Uh when not witnessing what we witness.
It was fun enough before. An appointment is out well, right? It's not like because you appoint him permanently. Yeah, you won't get to vote on it, right? But anytime you wanna have a vote to change forces, you can do it, just like we did with. The prior attorney. Now, he resigned. And that left us in a situation that we had to make a decision very quickly and thank God for his there to assist us. We will be in that same situation if we don't appoint him before July first. You know, and I don't know what we're gonna do. You you develop a reputation of going through attorneys like water and. You know, good luck finding the next one. I I think you can reassure yourself by knowing that it's an outlaw. You ever got evidence, you know, people say, people say, you know, people say, I don't have an interest in the city because I. My residence isn't. I am a property owner in the city. I have the same interest in that ordinance that everybody else does. But people say, I don't worry about what people say. I worry about the facts. If we have factual evidence of that, then at very next meeting, you can come in and make a motion to discharge the city attorney. He's out well. Functions out well. So you don't have to be concerned that you're losing the opportunity to address concerns of nepotism. You know, because you make it permanent. I don't think that we could have a better attorney than or attorneys than Castleberry and Lucas. And I think Commissioner Castleberry is an excellent commissioner and provides. A lot of good things and brings a lot of good things to the table. I would hate to lose you to one.
I agree.
Your point's well taken, Grant, but if we ever have hard evidence that there's a problem, we can say goodbye to Burke.
And like I said, to what I think to see the most, like I I really, you know, found an even higher admiration for Burke. It's just the fact that you're always on the phone with him. So he's communicating with the city administrators so much that that. And that is key, I feel like, to being an effective city attorney. So again. Help for a vote in two weeks.
So for the vote, um make the decision then. Well, I mean, the reason I wanted to put it on tonight's pre-meeting is, like I said. If it's June seventeenth and we're not gonna have another meeting and we don't have an attorney come July first, that's a big problem.
We don't have an attorney June seventeenth, probably. That's just my opinion. I won't vote for a German, tell me a plan. And a plan that will fill our needs just as good as the Castleberry offer. Not gonna get rid of an attorney and practice with such great experience because someone's perception to one commissioner or two commissioners. It's nepotism. Actual hard data. Has to be on the table. I talk about data and evaluation.
First firm hit the ground running. First day he stepped in with this firm and has not stopped running the entire time. And I don't know any numbers, but I know that from what I've witnessed and what you bring to the table when we have a meeting. With your advice and your leadership has been priceless.
Well, I mean, I'll just say that we're gonna put it on the agenda. Somebody is not going to support it. I would appreciate knowing that now, so that we can make alterable arrangements. Or come to prior to doing something.
So um other items, time permits, but nobody bears anything because we're losing word in other his.
My wife texted me, asked me to pick up.
Oh, she she texted me too.
But is there anything I would just mess with?
I don't need to pick anything up.
I I would go back to the city administrator evaluation. That's scheduled to take place on a date that um is a special meeting. Uh ideally, um I would like to be a part of to uh that uh evaluation. Or to talk about the moving forward point of what do we do to receive a raise that value.
Can you zoom in?
No, it would be, uh you can't participate from in closed session. In closed session.
Well, normally we would uh talk about everything else we had to do tonight and now. Quarter to ten, if there's anything we can. Reason for all he's doing. First meeting in June is so we can put a resolution on assuming that you're gonna let me have my staff increase. On June seventeenth, so the payroll is. So left the option of the tenth, which is what the agenda setting group discussed. That's all the special days. Understand your desire, participate. So what's the solution to the problem? You're you're gonna be in Japan next Monday, next month. You wanna participate, we're talking about having the evaluation. What's the alternative? How would we go on? You want you wanna have a closed session before the seventeenth meeting? And then vote?
Like that day.
That night, as to we do the evaluation while you're, I I'm asking the question.
That that's that's what they did with Nick. So they do the evaluation meeting before and then they.
Same same day, same night. Well, we have other things to do. We don't have a separate work session. Several layers of special meeting. Now your meeting starts at six. But can we call a special meeting at five?
That would also benefit, so it's not a three-hour meeting like it was last year.
I I I'm looking for a solution to this.
But you already called a special meeting.
You can cancel it and call another one, can't you? I'm just trying to find a compromise where everybody gets what they. Maybe that's not possible. I think it should be. I just believe that every one of us should have an opportunity. If I was gonna be out of town for the evaluation, that would disappoint me.
Commissioner Roberts was out of town last year and she just came in and talked to me.
Yep, I did my own evaluation face to face.
Do in closed session, but, you know, I think that held the same very same purpose. Would have been accomplished by her.
I guess I would have appreciated. Knowing what you were saying. I mean, we all talked in open, you know, in in an open-closed meeting. We hear what each other's perspectives are. I don't know what your perspective was last year.
But it was an option. It worked. It worked as an option. They were talking about options, so that still.
Well, yeah. I mean, but sure, Bob can go in and as Ben suggested, and sit down and talk to Greg. And I understand that. And that's not a bad solution. But then again, we're gonna have a discussion amongst ourselves, and we're gonna know what each other is saying. I'd like to know what Bob is saying.
But two of us can go and do as need.
Yeah, that's what I.
Okay. No, I'm just saying, we're throwing out options.
Yeah, and I I did suggest that.
I would be comfortable with anything that makes sure that everybody's voice is for.
When do you leave, Bob?
Um I leave Thursday at like two thirty. This Thursday? Yes. We're not something I've been that. I'm an adult now. Head to the bus to Cleveland.
If we're if we're okay with having another three, four-hour meeting. We can cancel a special meeting for next week and do it after uh seventeen. Figure evaluation, like we're having our sessions. We would still need to be kind of making an assumption that you're going to go in session anyway.
But then we would still need to hold a special meeting to vote.
You'd have to vote on it before. If you're gonna do it after, you'd have to vote on it, not know.
We're still gonna have to hold a special meeting sometimes.
If you do it beforehand, your time limit. Well, if we schedule a five, like somebody suggested, and we have our next meeting that has to start at six.
Doesn't have to start at six, but try to meet that goal.
I'm playing for donuts. I'm bringing a donut.
That's fine. I don't mind sometimes.
So would we, would we have a special meeting before our regular six o'clock meeting? Would it would we call it a special?
You, I mean. What the administrator says correctly, if you if you do the work-study session at the end of. Meeting, you're gonna have voted already. I mean. Work-study session. That would do the evaluation.
No, it's typically been a special meeting.
It's a special meeting because you're going to a closed session.
What I'm saying is, I'm trying to think of. So you don't, I don't wanna leave them out there for two hours. And then you're gonna come back and vote and everybody's gonna be gone.
See, but we could call a special meeting to go into closed sections there. So yeah, special meeting at four P M. Have our special meeting closer. Four thirty, uh whatever. I I mean, but I don't wanna make it more complicated than it is. But we could have a special meeting. Adjourn the special meeting, start the six o'clock. I mean, if we can't do the evaluation in an hour and a half, that's. That ought to be plenty of time.
The other option would be we do your evaluation at the next general meeting. And then we wait and vote in July and you.
That's a real.
But it is an option.
And for me too, because now I don't. But you're gonna get it retroactive. I understand that, but there's no reason why that should have to be true. We've known for one solid year when my evaluations.
That's true.
Both we've known for one solid year that it was supposed to have a valuation. Ideally, you shouldn't take it tonight.
It was on the draft agenda and we decided to move it because of all the things we had to do tonight. So we had an alternative date that everybody can be here except you.
And June second next year, I'm flying out again, which is the day after the first Monday of June um as well.
City operations. Revolve around your travel.
Right, but but the mind planning is that I'm putting the city first. So that I'm not going to Moriyama for the other job on uh tonight. Which could have, which was gonna be the initial thing. So I put the city first to be here for that scheduled meeting.
What's the ramifications of us staying with our meeting on the tenth? Bob misses it, that correct? Unfortunate, I know that this time is crunchy, trying to fly out on Thursday, but almost would feel like if. Greg's and Bob's schedule would allow for them to talk this weekend before he leaves. I would, I would be interested in seeing if that would work.
There's a four thirty evaluation on the seventeenth off the table.
Well, how about from five o'clock? Where'd that go?
That four forty five.
I knew you were gonna do that.
City Hall at four thirty.
It takes six five, four forty five.
It does work.
How long does it, how long did it take us last time to get it evaluated? Were we there more than an hour?
Absolutely not. About an hour. No. So we could do it four forty five on the seventeenth. If that's, I'm just saying.
So. So I would just need to resend special meeting. Just can't.
Close it, then it's canceled. Put the new. Are you making? Uh when do you get more? Are you, you can. Are you making uh seventeen? Yeah, are you gonna have two meetings or one? You can have a special.
Change the starting time. Do all the things that are on our new agenda.
Is it better to do the special meeting at five or four forty five, five, whatever you said, and then the regular meeting at six? That's how I feel.
That's fine. So you're gonna have public comment. Actually, for. Before or after your moment, it's your new rule, sort of apply the special meetings, you're just regular.
It's like go recess, we'll wear them out. It's like no recess, we're where am I? Sorry. So the last question.
Gets delayed.
So, anymore? Any, any other items to discuss, right? I just think, sorry. Been a long night. All right, is there any public comment? We will start inside the chambers first. You know the, the rule, I don't wanna go through it all. Is there any public comment online? All right, may, um, I get a motion to adjourn?
So, support.
All favorites say aye?